Any additions, corrections to the agenda?
No, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The, uh, for you with the, uh, regular meeting on February 10th. Any additions, directions? Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, for public comment, if you won't mind using the, uh, the podium there so it can get on to PEG TV and what have you. So, um, Dick Corner, you're on the top of the West there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm here to discuss the amendment, the parking ban amendment, which runs in front of my house. Um, kinda having a hard time understanding the reasoning for including my section of High Street. And I'm also kinda disturbed that nobody reached out to any of the homeowners to inform them that this was gonna happen. And would like to understand your reasoning for doing this.
You ready to speak to that?
Well, I think we just addressed all the parking issues in town and designated streets that seem to be a problem or an issue because of traffic. Um, and also if they were parked on the sidewalk or off the sidewalk, then it would pretty much like, um, slow traffic down or not allow like private trucks to go through.
Well, I've lived on that street for 30 years and there's never been a parking issue between School Street and Church Street. Um, I'm just, I don't understand the reasoning. I understand that if you have problems with the daycare down on the other end of High Street, that you can handle that administratively and enforce the zoning conditions that the Planning Commission put in there, which has not been done to date. Um, other than that, I'm not aware of any parking issues. Um, and I would really ask you to reconsider that you at least remove that section of High Street from the parking ban. For the, I mean currently as it's written right now, you're going to eliminate my mail delivery, my UPS delivery, FedEx, oil deliveries, because it says no vehicle shall park, stand, or be on that street in a parked mode. Um, and that's something that just is really hard to live with. Um, you know, if we have a summer gathering, if we have a few people over at summer for a barbecue, if we have something in the winter, you're gonna force people to park down on Church Street, which is a far more dangerous situation than anybody parking on High Street. Um, and the Union Church has their cellars, there's always dozen, two dozen cars parked up there. I mean, are you gonna send the police up there on that day to issue tickets to everybody that's parked up there? You know, welcome to Proctor, spend your money here, we'll give you a ticket. Um, I, I don't understa-- if somebody can please explain to me why that section of High Street, which has never had a parking issue, is included. I, I would like to hear that reasoning.
I'm guilty--
Go ahead, Tom.
I'm guilty of not reading the whole thing here. I thought it was, uh, actually the other side of School Street on High Street.
Well, it's not. I mean, you read it, it's very early--
You're absolutely correct, you're absolutely--
Describes that whole length of High Street.
Yeah, I think it was, uh, an oversight, certainly on my part, I didn't read--
The only concern about us was, well, you mentioned where daycare is down there.
Which doesn't impact my part of High Street whatsoever.
Right, and I think that was more just of a, a neighbor issue, like being neighborly and, you know, allowing people to, you know, park like on one side of the street versus both sides of the street, so.
Well, yeah, but there's bans parking over--
Right, oh, I know, I know.
You know, um, and I mean, I would really like you to reconsider that, um, and I would like some action taken tonight, otherwise I'm, you know, it's a timely thing, I'm gonna be forced to get a petition going, and if there's a vote, this whole ordinance is gonna be voted down. Because I haven't spoken to one person yet that supports it, and I've spoken to a lot of people over this weekend.
Yeah. I think some of the parking problem that we had too was the other end of High Street, near the corner of School Street, coming up that way.
That's the parking issue there.
Uh?
I mean, you know, people queuing up and waiting to pick their kids up?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, then the logical thing there is to say no parking from three, or from 2:30 to 3:30--
Yeah.
--in the afternoon on school days.
Yeah.
I mean, to do a 24/7, 365-day-a-year parking ban, to me, just is like, you know, taking a sledgehammer to, you know, to a very small problem.
Yeah.
No problem, actually, on that section. So if I could get a vote or something that you'll remove that, I will, um, not pursue a petition to have it go to a vote.
Well, I have a point, I have a question. Is that something you can do since it's already in effect? It was my understanding the only, um--
Petition.
But path was a petition. People can come in and request that portions of the parking ban be removed, because I'm sorry Judy, as I said here tonight, and you say we addressed streets that were problems that people complained about? That's not true. I have been here for a very long time and no one has come in here and complained about Park Street across from the high school.
Well, okay, so people who did complain, we did address. I'm not saying we addressed ones that people didn't complain about, that's not what I said. I said we addressed ones that people complained about.
And no one has not been--
We talked about Main Street.
Has not been a conversation--
That was a complaint.
No, I mean, I've read through the minutes going back quite a ways, and I have not seen any discussion about this whatsoever, other than there's this pending ordinance, there's this pending ordinance that you're gonna pass. There's no discussion, I didn't see anybody coming in from the public to discuss it, and nobody was, was notified. I mean--
Well, if you read the minutes prior, you saw that we talked about this, why didn't you come in at the prior meetings?
I didn't read, I found out about this by reading through the Proctor reporter, Proctor Pittsburgh Brandon reporter. That's the only way I knew about this. And then I went back and researched the minutes. I shouldn't have had to do that. I should have been notified that you are planning on banning parking in front of my house prior to this even being, you know-- Invite us in, discuss it. What are the issues? There are no issues. And, and so, I mean, I think you can maybe rescind this whole ordinance and start over again, and maybe call the neighbors in that are affected, and have a civil discussion about it, and find out what the, what the issues really are. Like I said, for the daycare, that should be handled through a zoning administrator, through a zoning violation. I understand you don't have a zoning administrator right now, but you can invite, you can appoint an interim zoning administrator. You can appoint any of yourself, you can appoint Stan as an interim zoning administrator to deal with this issue. Um, I don't even--
They're violating the permit, so they got a permit to have the place, and then they basically violated it--
Right.
--for parking, so that was--
So that's a zoning, that's a zoning matter.
Right.
And that's the way it should be handled.
But, well, I mean, I'm just saying, in, as far as, Lisa, with the complaints, we did address a lot of people who had complaints about specific places, correct?
Judy, you discussed the school when Ben is here in November, I read those minutes to you, Ben was not at the prior meeting, and at that meeting, you brought the ordinance back, the wording changed, there was no, anything I had to say, it was mute, couldn't say anything, Stan had already rewritten it. The question I asked about liability in sidewalk to this day has not been answered. I don't know if Stan has an answer for that question this evening, but you had a consensus about that particular street in November, you rewrote it, you brought it back, and that night you adopted it. It has been on the agenda multiple times, always, we'll do it next time, we'll do it next time. That is why I have said multiple times, your agenda should be no different than any others. If you're going to take action, you should have it noted for action, because you carry things much too long on your agenda, and then you decide to take action, you say, well, you shouldn't have known. Well, you've carried it for, since November, before, actually since September.
Well, I believe the Senate Board can rescind this whole ordinance, and maybe start over again, maybe invite the public to a discussion of the impacted people. I mean, you, you, there's a lot of streets on here that you know. Kane Street, McGary Street, Park Street, High Street, School Street. I'm still totally confused why Mill Street is included, um, from Franklin's up to, uh, School Street.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Because somebody parks there and you can't get around, and it's a danger. A homeowner parks on that corner, so people can't see, people can't get around, and school kids also can't cross safely.
Okay, well then deal with that, and, you know, have the police go down there, or whatever, no parking from here to the corner.
That's part of--
I mean, maybe, maybe you don't understand, but, you know, Franklin's, for example, would like an Act 250 permit at some point to have events and whatnot at the quarry and at his place. If you can't park on Mill Street, he's gonna have a hard time getting an Act 250 permit. And here we are trying to promote Proctor, try to get activities going in Proctor, and you're gonna put a low, a low, a roadblock in front of, you know, one of our only businesses trying to do anything in town.
So currently, we've also been told by the sheriff that without an ordinance, there's nothing that they're going to do.
I understand that.
So that's--
But there's better ways to deal with it. If queuing up on High Street and, and School Street is an issue, then say, no parking from 2:30 to 3:30, or whatever the hours are, school days. I mean, to include my part of High Street in this total parking ban, it is, to me, I, I don't understand it. I, I just truly do not understand why it's included. Um, and I would really like this whole thing rescinded and rethought, and maybe, and give me some sort of answer tonight, because it is, the clock is running, I'm getting a petition going to have a townwide vote on it.
Ask a question, please. Yes?
Yeah, just a second, let Dick first.
I fully support--
Okay.
I support Dick in that the spaces along the road are ridiculous. I've been more concerned with High Street, let's say, I start at the big pine tree there. There was an agreement sign during the zoning process that outlined exactly how that daycare should be taken care of. And has that been signed or agreed to?
Yeah, I mean, there are conditions of how they're all supposed to park, they're not parked down there, and that's a zoning administrator's job to deal with that. Not, the sheriff, the sheriff's aren't gonna do anything, because like you said, there's no ordinance, there's no signs, they have no ability. But it is a zoning ordinance, or, I mean, it is a zoning condition of their permit. And then we thought about, I mean, towns on the Planning Commission, we thought about it a lot, about, you know, how to approach this, and how to, you know, because neighbors did come in and they were concerned about the parking, and we put conditions in there. And so that's up to a zoning administrator to enforce. Not, you know, because you have one problem, you know, on the other hand of the block for me, to include them, it is ridiculous, and, you know, additionally, like I say, my guests are now gonna have to park on Church Street, which is horribly dangerous with that curve and everything, they're gonna have people park there. Um, and I don't want you to go ban Church Street now too. Um, but I really would like an answer tonight, so I can know one way or another. So that's, um, and once again, just that I am disappointed that no contact was made to any of the residents. I, I think to take away your park, I mean, you've to buy with my property. You know, if I were to sell my house and somebody comes to look at my house and they rock out and there's a ticket on their car, do you think they're gonna buy my house? Do you think they're gonna buy any of the houses around there? You know, it's just not a good feeling about Proctor, so, thank you very much.
So Stan, can we make a motion to delay?
I think there's a motion, because you have to go back in and rewrite it--
Right.
--unless you wanna do hearings, is to rescind it as, as Dick said, the motion at the last meeting, and then you could start over again.
Have all parties signed that, come up with approval for that, uh, that, the number that was sent out, the agreement that they signed in the zoning board, has that been accepted by the--
Yes, that's, that's a condition, that's an act, that's the current condition.
Right, but has the town accepted that?
Yes.
There was a little adjustment.
The Planning Commission signed it, so it's duly enforced.
Well, then--
But unless, unless reading it, and I would suggest you read it, Dick, and reread it again, but I believe part of the conditions are, if there is a car parked on Pine Street, High Street, it will be parked on the east side of the road.
Right.
That's in it, so it recognizes that there could be cars parked on--
Sure, because you're gonna have visitors too, or, you know, but the condition was that all of their drop-off people have to park on the lower driveway, all of their employees are supposed to park on the upper driveway. Um, and just like anybody else, you're gonna have guests that are possibly gonna park on the road. So, I mean, like, once again, I would just ask that you rescind it tonight and rethink it.
One of the things I didn't realize, there's no parking on East Street Hill, it's, it's clearly signed, there is no ordinance against that, um, so from what I understand, those signs are useless.
I don't know how useless they are, I told you the time I would check with the Sheriff's Department to see whether they're enforceable. I don't ever remember seeing them until they evolved to my attention.
They were there for as long as I can remember.
Because they were reset when they did the paving a few years ago.
Exactly, new ones, yes.
Yeah.
But the signs were there before. Yes, I mean, it's, with the trucks going up there in the winter, it's difficult enough without. So I'd like to make a motion, we rescind this, and--
Can I, I offer an amendment to your motion too, that we have a committee of two select board members to plow through, figure out exactly what we wanna be focusing on in the ordinance, and reach out to property owners to let them know and give them their input. So that way we move forward with it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And do you wish-- I have to make a motion, I will have to do a petition now, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Do we wanna talk about that, committee?
Yeah, so we should--
Do you wanna do that, since we're doing a police forcing?
Sure, I have no problem with that. Is that okay with everybody?
Is that okay with everybody? Will Tom and, or Ben and I will do it? Okay.
Can I ask a question? That, I, I believe that if you have been approached with issues on a particular street, that those issues should come forward. None of those issues have been discussed, particularly by the school, um, prior to this ordinance being put into effect. So if you have a list of issues, and just like Dick said, is it just going to be two select board members, or will there be some kind of public forum to discuss this? Or is it going to be, you're going to bring it back, and three meetings later, you're going to approve it?
Well, I think if we're going to revisit it and we rescind it, then we go, reach out to everybody in the town, and basically anybody who has an issue, or if there's certain hotspots that people are concerned about, then those people definitely get invited, and we have a meeting, and it's on the agenda, stated, and anybody can come and voice their opinions before it's reviewed by the full board.
And the reason, the only reason I thought of a committee is that way Carrie and I can do some legwork without having to warn every single time that we, that we do it.
And since we are working--
Yeah, we'll have to have a meeting-- Yeah, we will ultimately have a meeting, but we can, we can do the preliminary stuff.
That, something, we wanna have a motion regarding Ben and Carrie, doing some initial work on this, and bringing it back and having a hearing.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I think there was already a motion on the floor, Tom's motion.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Rescind.
Mr. Rescind, but he's talking about the committee.
Committee and--
That's, that's not part of the, is that part of the motion? Did we vote on that motion?
Yes, uh, two select, uh, two select board members.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we just get that covered.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, Louise, that one? Yeah.
I, I--
Oh, did you wanna speak on anything?
No.
No? Okay, no? Okay. Wait.
Actually, I believe it was--
It's on the agenda.
Sure, yeah, would you wanna come up here and, so we can--
Are we giving the agenda?
Pardon me?
Are we moving the agenda then? They're on the agenda.
We are.
Oh, yes, excuse me, excuse me. Okay, um, was Amanda coming to the meeting? I, I, she recovering, where is she? I haven't been here--
I, I thought she was, but--
I did too, I wanted to name that when you came in.
I mean, I, I can discuss, the town, Tom's here, he's on the Planning Commission, he's gonna present input.
Yeah, why don't you do it, Dick?
Okay. Um, so a lot of you know, we received a grant from the State Community Development Department, housing community development, and we hired, with that grant money, the town hired the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to assist us in rewriting the town plan, which the Planning Commission adopted after last meeting. Um, and this was, previous one was good for five years, the state change a lot, and they're not good for eight years, so it won't, will not have to be amended again for another eight years. The bulk of the plan, there were no substantial changes in, in the bulk of the plan. What we did is we updated statistics, um, the graphics are much better, much, much more readable. And the main component that we did add, which the state requires, an energy component, which every town plan is required to have if we wanna be a party to wind development, solar development, those kinds of things. The majority of the Planning Commission is, is my take, is that we did not want to have an energy plan because it is on risk, or I was, cer-- I'm not saying it's on risk, but there are things in there that we didn't necessarily agree with, such as some of the, some of the goals, and, and some of what Proctor's share of, um, of renewable energy is. Um, you know, right now, I think that our hydro pretty much produces probably as much energy in Rutland County as anything else, and so, you know, our argument was that we're already doing our share, and we shouldn't have to, you know, have a bunch of solar farms and, and, you know, wind and whatnot. Um, so there is a caveat at the beginning of the appendix with the energy section in there, saying that the town of Proctor doesn't necessarily agree with this, but we understand that it's a necessary component to move forward. Um, so the Planning Commission did approve the plan, the next step is for you folks to have a public hearing, and then it goes to the Regional Commission for their input and public hearing, and once they do that, then it's approved, and it will have standing in the state, um, as far as allowing Proctor to have party status with any of these renewable energy projects that go along. And, and I would like to say, apparently Amanda's not here, but Amanda and Barbara Pullit and I was pulling, um, who did the energy section, were very helpful, um, aimed at the meetings, walked us through it, did all the heavy lifting, the typing and providing the graphics, and there's a bunch of, you know, wonderful new maps that are very, you know, up to date, very good, I love, love the maps, um, but nothing really substantive was changed, the flood zones are the same, um, all of those elements that might affect anything in town really has not changed, just updated numbers, census numbers, those kinds of things, so, and we're out with it.
Looks great. I certainly believe we got him what he's worth from that.
I think we did, yes, yeah. No, like I said, Regional Commission, Amanda was great working with, to work with, and pulled it all together for us.
Any comments on that?
Do we need a motion for that? I think there's a advertisement for the public hearing, maybe it's scheduled for April 13th, uh, which I think we met the timelines, I would check with Amanda one more time, which you have to have so many days between the time that it's presented to the board, which was tonight, or so many days before you can hold a hearing. It has to be advertised for 15 days. Uh, paper of record is the reporter was published with on Wednesday, so I worked out a date so that it would show up on a Wednesday. And, but I will check with her one more time to make sure that the 10th, or the--
What, what, 13th? The 10th or the 13th?
13th. The 13th.
The 10th is yours, and it's--
Right, yeah, okay. I, I live out of town at that time, but, um, you know, if you get Amanda here and, you know, maybe somebody else from the Planning Commission, um, I think it'll work just fine.
Are you gone for extended, or?
I am, yeah.
We'll be back for the 20th then.
No.
And, and there is a deadline for May something.
I, I can get, you, you have, I think the Planning, the Select Board has, is it something like 30 to 120 days to hold a meeting?
Yeah.
Something along those, it's a pretty wide kind of frame, so you have a lot of flexibility as far as that goes. And there's no penalty for not having a hearing in that timeframe. But I think we should get it moving and get it going, and get it approved, and get it to the Regional Commission for their approval, which I have no doubt they'll approve since they, you know, participated in it, and then we do it.
I think, I think it covers, did a good, great job. Yeah, it seems complete.
Yeah, no, we had some, some good discussions and, and--
Spent a lot of time on it.
Yeah, we did. And ultimately, it was, you know, let's update it, may have this energy plan, and I think it'll work well for Proctor for the next eight years.
And I don't think we need to do anything tonight, unless you wanna schedule a meeting.
Is, so the 13th is a regular meeting? So it can't be at the same time, right? It's a select board meeting starting at 6:00.
It's called for 6 o'clock, the Select Board meeting is called for 6 o'clock, which order you take them in, do the hearing first at 6:00, and then you start your regular meeting after that. But you don't know how long the hearing may last, so that's why I said them at the same time.
I mean, I can't, you know, judging from the turnout we had, which was, well, I can't imagine that a whole lot of people will be here, and that the hearing will last more than five or 10 minutes.
Sure.
I find that pretty.
I think that, that works out for 13th and--
And save an extra meeting, you know.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
I think that one's okay with me, too. Do we need a motion for that, or we just--
I would have a motion for the public hearing, it was--
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, excuse me. Yeah, we jumped over, we need to go back to the public comment, and rather than have these people stayed over the end of the meeting, so. Someone wanna speak on, you all wanna speak on the, the Second Amendment?
We have one presenter here.
Sure.
We can move on.
Yeah, if you wanna step up here, and then we can, everybody can hear it, yeah. I think we have one, actually.
It's on the slightly--
Oh, okay.
Semi-nas.
Yeah, I think that's in a packet here, so.
I agree.
Right, yeah, thank you.
All right. My name's Phil Bennett, I was here a couple weeks ago. Um, we were asked to come back, so you guys could have some time to discuss and think about things. So I will reread the resolution. The Resolution for the Defense of the Right to Keep and Bear Arms. The township Proctor hereby declares itself to be a Second Amendment and Article 16 constitutional given under township, township as defined herein. The town hereby recognizes the inerrable right of all persons within its boundaries to keep and bear arms as described by both Article 16 of the Vermont Constitution and the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America, including but not limited to the lawful use of firearms in defense of life, liberty-- the not limited to the lawful use of firearms in defense of life, liberty, and property in defense of the state from all enemies, foreign and domestic, the safe and responsible use of firearms for hunting and utilitarian purposes, and the safe and responsible use of firearms for sporting purposes, including Olympic sports. Furthermore, per Marbury versus Madison, 5 U.S. 137, 1803, the township hereby declares all federal and state laws and regulations attempting to restrict these rights to be infringements, hence null and void under this resolution. We, as citizens of Proctor, are asking you to support this resolution. It is an affirmation that the town of Proctor supports our rights under Article 16, which reads, "That the people have a right to bear arms for the defense of themselves and the state as stand armies and times of peace are dangerous to liberty, they are not to be kept up, and that the military should be kept under strict subordination to and governed by the civil power." We have given you a copy of this resolution. We respectfully ask that you pass it to affirm our rights as but not citizens.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment, though. I, first of all, want to make it clear I support the Second Amendment and not a gun owner. I'm also a social studies teacher, and so an occupational hazard of that is constitutional law. Marbury versus Madison does not give us the right to nullify laws. Marbury versus Madison is judicial review. Nullification is actually unconstitutional. I have no problem with anything in this except for that last sentence.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
In the spirit of transparency, I actually live in a... Okay, sorry, I'm curious. We, we're not trying to change any laws. We know this is basically symbolic. We know that Vermont isn't a federal state. We want to keep it that way. This is a symbolic action. What's happening is in Montpelier, a lot of legislators out, up, over there are trying to pass laws, in particular gun laws, just for the sake of passing gun laws. Almost 300 years, Vermont has been the, one of the top two safest states in the country, year after year after year. And that's despite the fact that we have no gun laws. Basically, we're like an idiot being a truth. So, now we have out-of-state influences coming in here. You have Michael Olmeyer, a lot dropping literally millions of dollars trying to affect the gun laws here for no reason. Last week, okay, right now we have 8610. Okay, that's a bill that's floating around.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Could we have the speakers go off today? I can't hear what you said.
Yeah. You want to come up, please? I'm not going to start that again, but... 8610. So, there's a law that has been floated around by Maxine Grad, Maland, I forgot his first name, and a few others. Basically, on the surface, it's kind of a mottled, fuzzy law, the so-called red flag laws, that if you have somebody, you know, causing abuse on a spouse or something, that the guns can be basically taken away. Unfortunately, not only have these red flag laws been proven not to work, they're also unconstitutional. Okay? The Fourth Amendment, the right of, you know, due process, all these things are being trampled on. And yet, a lot of the people in Montpelier are trying to pass these laws for no reason and saying, "To heck with you and your constitutional rights." Not just the Second Amendment. I can, there's a whole list of constitutional rights that are being trampled on. And that's not because Vermonters have asked for it. It's because out-of-state money has been coming in here by the millions of dollars trying to influence our politics. And so, Second, okay, maybe you're not into the Second Amendment or Article 16, which, are you familiar with Article 16?
I am, and I just said I fully support the Second Amendment and Article 16. What I'm saying is, this is not what Marbury versus Madison says.
Okay.
That's my only...
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Despite that, so what we're trying to do, this is basically a symbolic protest. And I know everybody here is very patriotic and I could tell, you know, when we started the meeting with the play of allegiance, everybody, you know, I could tell you didn't just go through the motions. Everybody, you meant it. I could tell that. But we're here to, not only through the, have the town of Proctor basically give an official protest against what Montpelier is doing, okay? Yeah, Second Amendment's this week, then the First Amendment, then everything else down the line will be affected. I know two weeks ago, believe it or not, you asked me what is in it for, but this is in it for the town of Proctor. Basically, all the other rights are eventually going to trickle down into this town and affect the people. So, basically, what we're trying to do is get Proctor to join, and right now we have about 13, maybe a few more towns throughout Vermont who have passed these resolutions already. Okay, this isn't, we're not just starting with Proctor. Basically, town of, Montpelier, knock it off. Okay? We're the people and you work for us. So, all we're trying to do is get you guys to vote your, this resolution basically saying your support of not only Second Amendment, but in association with the other ones.
And, as I said, I don't disagree with any of this. The problem is just this last sentence is not... I mean, I will vote for it in a heartbeat.
We can strike that.
Yeah.
You know, that was part of our so-called sales pitch.
Gotcha.
Okay? We don't, you know, you, I mean, you understand the basics of what we're trying to do.
Absolutely.
And that's the spirit of it. And that's all we're trying to get you to vote on.
So, I have a question. So, I'm, like with Ben, as far as the Second Amendment goes, totally in agree, agreement. My question to you is, when they do try to pass these laws up in the State House, say, doing background checks, limiting the types of guns you can have, are you all for that as well or are you totally against all of that?
Many of the laws that we're talking about are already in place. You can't buy a gun at a dealership without going through background checks anyway. Every single form of violence there is, has already been legislated ad nauseam, every which way, okay? So, basically, what they're trying to do, they're trying to add up gun control bills just for the sake of gun control bills, just because certain individuals are paying money to do so. Okay? And they're trying to basically control the population, okay, without getting into conspiracy theory thing, one small, one fuzzy law at a time. It's incrementalism, is what it is, the whole frog experiment thing. Throughout the country, these laws have been passed a little bit at a time, more and more and more. And like you know, you've got Chicago, Los Angeles, New Jersey, all these places are extreme draconian law states and they're some of the most dangerous places to live anyway. Gun, gun control doesn't work. Nationwide, there's already over 22,000 gun control laws in existence on a federal and statewide level. If gun control worked, why hasn't it? So, it's just, it's people control, is what it is. Gun control, I don't even call gun control. I call gun owner control. Did I answer your question? I almost feel like I didn't.
Yeah. Trying to...
I just, I don't know. I just, I did a lot of research on it after you first met with us and I just, I just, you know, I'm all about everybody having, being able to hunt and have handguns and all this. It's when I see these other extreme forms of guns that get in the hands of the wrong person, those things bother me. And in, I know the NRA is the push behind all of this sanctuary towns.
The NRA has nothing to do with this.
Okay, well, I've read it someplace that part of people say that.
Can I ask where?
I can't remember. I have to look up this thing.
The NRA has nothing to do with it. The NRA gets a lot of the blame, which is fine. Okay, they can have the blame. I'm a member of Gun Owners of Vermont, and to be honest with you, we're spearheading it. But it's really just individual people within each town. He lives here, okay, and he's the one basically spearheaded. I'm here in support.
So, is this resolution pretty much the exact same resolution in every state or not? Or is this geared...
Every state, no. For instance, in Virginia, there's a huge thing going, again, you've heard all about it. They're going Kennedy by Kennedy by Kennedy and they're going really severe. We're not that severe. This is more of a way of getting Proctor to say, "We believe in the Constitution. We believe that you folks in Montpelier should keep up your hands off our rights to protect ourselves and to keep, to keep our rights to protect the state." Everything in Article 16, we have the rights to do that and you don't have a right to chip it away, so knock it off. Like I said, we already have like 13 towns and maybe one or two more. And I have a...
Town to town, they're basically saying.
Town to town.
Vermont.
Yeah. I, I can see them changing laws little by little in Montpelier.
We, for 200 and almost 300 years, we haven't had any. I grew up in New Jersey, okay? I know what it's like to live under that. And trust me, it doesn't work. I swear to you, it doesn't work. I come here and I can keep my doors unlocked, okay? The elderly woman living next door to me, okay, is she safe? Will a bad guy go in there? Will a bad guy think, "I don't know if she's armed or not"? That's what Vermont is like and that's... So, they're chipping away and we don't like it. And first is guns, next thing is your right to write whatever you want, your right to come here and, you know, and complain about what we kind of think are mundane little things, but they're not. They're lifestyle items. That's what they're trying to affect. Again, first about the guns and someone.
Thanks.
Yeah, my only objection is that last sentence.
We can strike that. You have to be there. It was just...
It's just that what we're at, what this is called modification, that's been found unconstitutional. What, a municipality declaring a law null and void is called nullification and that's been found unconstitutional. This is saying that the courts have the right to declare a law unconstitutional. So, that's my only objection. It's a civics teacher in me, you gotta...
So, just read that first part of the sentence and just start with...
The entire...
The entire thing.
Just furthermore to the...
Okay, yeah.
And then I have no objection.
So, you don't want the Madison line?
Well, it, it's more than that. It's saying that the municipality is declaring it null and void and that's unconstitutional. We don't have the authority to do that.
Gotcha.
So... But the rest of it, I think it's fantastic. I agree 100%. So, I would move to pass this resolution minus the last sentence, furthermore to, under this resolution.
Can I second that?
All over the favor? All right. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All of you coming out tonight. Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I will retype it, put the names in, just like get it to your signature.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for volunteering to cover Article 7 on the town meeting. No, thank you so much for offering. Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night, guys. Go to sleep and rest of the evening.
Well, I'd love to, but I gotta go ahead and...
Take care. Bye, guys. Thanks, Justin.
Well, I didn't take him out.
I'm usually as populous and powerful as...
Thank you. I was just here in support of that amendment.
Yes.
And I just wanted to say before I leave, as a lifelong Vermonter, I thank you for your support.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming. Okay. Good stuff.
I just want to comment about the filming at the skating rink, that that was a big draw. That's great that it, they acknowledged it and the comments they made about the skating rink and, you know, kind of bringing Proctor a little on the light. And then I also don't know if anybody knows that we are also on the cover of Rutland Magazine, so... We are.
I haven't seen that, the spring issue?
We are, and there's an article in about the town's look, about Swedish history. That was, actually, the information came from the library as did the pictures.
Nice.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good article.
Yeah.
I'll have to read it.
Nice summer picture. Yeah. It's a good magazine.
It is.
Must cost my fortune to put this thing out. The pictures are always great. Well, I want to...
Thank you, Judy.
Yeah.
Thank Lisa and the school for delivering the town report.
Yes.
It's great. Did a nice job.
And I liked in the back that it said that too, on the back of the town report. Then it said it was delivered by them.
And Ben and I did take a moment Saturday and went up and presented the town report to Nancy Hutter and I think she was a little taken back.
She was. Well, you lied to her for one thing.
I lied, yes, I did.
Was she going to show her a historical photo?
We had some information on, so I just wanted to make sure she was home.
So, that was nice. She was, she was very...
I forgot our annual report into the city today because they've been bringing certain ones from other towns that where people live and they're so impressed by ours. I was like, "This is really a nice report." Because a lot of them, it's, it's like, like this.
The staple together.
Yeah, like a newsletter, so...
Yeah. And I did bring up the extra copies to where we were when Stan had gotten those, so she's all set with those. We were going to do a presentation, I was thinking of it and Stan and I talked, but Nancy said she didn't think she'd be at town meeting. She didn't like to get out at night and what have you, so just wanted to make note of that, so... Okay. Highway Department. We've got a show report. We had four days of battling the elements, one holiday, a lot of the other time was done bucking up wood and cleaning out the shop and the equipment.
They did a great job with the storm.
Yes.
Stan, do we have any salt left in stock right now? Like, could we get through another storm, do you know?
We've got four loads.
Okay.
Sitting right there now. With him, and he ordered, we've got the weather forecast for this week.
100 tons.
He's going to try to sneak through and do it.
That's my... No, it's not bad.
The tonnage is up, the price is lower than what we budgeted for us.
Yes. A little bit.
We're still running ahead of the game right now.
Good day, and the new salt sheds working out okay for them?
I believe so. They haven't made any complaints. I'll be honest with you, I haven't been down for them. They've been at 2:00 in the morning when they've been operating. 4:00, not 2:00.
It's gotta be nice to have some inventory in right here rather than having to wait for somebody to deliver some more when you get down to the bottom of the pile. John did mention they were able to get some sand undercover where before it was always outdoors and frozen, the trucks didn't like it and you'd have to fight with it, so...
So, can I ask a question? My question is kind of concerning the sidewalks. As I walked town yesterday, they were pretty icy. How are we doing with that today since today the kids went back to school?
Today was warm. They did put salt on them, but it just didn't act up until it got to yesterday when it's got warmed up and again today. I think they're all clear. I think they're all clear. The issue that they were having, or I was having with them, was doing the sidewalk and implying to slosh up onto the sidewalk. Gonna have to go back and redo it. That was the biggest issue they had was, where to put the snow.
Our South Street sidewalk project, I think is a good thing. Numerous people are walking in the road there now on South Street. It makes it tricky some days.
Yeah. We haven't heard yet on that one.
No, we haven't, but it's, we're trying to move forward with it.
Yes.
It's a, it's a good thing.
Yeah, I did talk with John today. We will be submitting for a Class II Highway paving grant for a portion of West Street. It's the same portion we submitted on last year. We didn't get a grant last year. I don't expect we'll get one this year. But we keep applying. Hopefully, when we get the bridge done at North Street, we can do all of that with a paving grant. Yes. So at the next meeting, I'll have an application for a Class II paving grant for, just to do it for the sake of doing it.
Okay, anything else for Highway? If not a motion to go on the Board of Water Commissioners?
Some of them.
Second.
All over the favor?
Aye.
We had the issue with the pressure-reducing valve down, valve down on the wellhouse on Field Street. People got a little loss of water for a while, and they also got a shot of chlorine when they disinfected the whole thing. The chlorine did all the way to the end of the line out on Route 3. Once we were aware of what it was, it was just something that they were taking care of, and no big issues. I did meet with John and Chris to outline all the projects and get them listed and try to get them onto a schedule. So that's the next thing I hope to be able to do, both water and sewer.
Contract six.
I just threw this in here. We noticed a road that went to Belden. But more importantly, tomorrow is the pre-construction conference where we sign contracts and get a schedule of what work, when we're gonna get it done.
And the, sticking by the place from...
Yep.
Great. And last year, they're good.
So that's going on today. Bruce will be here. Tom will show up for that one.
He'll try to.
Okay.
Good. Belonging accounts.
This is an updated list as of Friday. And we have some new yeses and some new noes coming on.
Any questions?
Yes, the one we can't shut off there, we got three customers on one service.
Yep.
You were gonna come up with some kind of a preliminary plan, a cost estimate.
I haven't got the cost estimate. We've got the plan, which is to run a two-inch line from the west end of Golden Bridge Road to serve the two customers and then shut it off at the top. And I don't have the cost for it, or whether we can do it ourselves, or whether we need to hire someone else to run a backup for us. We can do the side of the pipe, it's a question of...
Yeah, roughly how many feet of ditch are you talking?
We're talking about a hundred and fifty feet.
Also, the hydrant on Patch Street.
We've filled the hydrants.
You said there was a trebulation that's...
It's, you know, it does not meet the standard. What we're doing is, I checked it with the hydro down at the race water plant, which did give us the desired five hundred gallons a minute. Fighting this information into the engineers to run the model to see how much eight-inch pipe we would have to put in in Patch Street in order to make that, bring that hydrant back up to standard again.
Okay.
Anything else for water? Motion to go on the Board of Sewer Commissioners? All over the favor?
Aye.
Nothing special going on. I believe that we, at this meeting with John and Chris, we talked about the Lagoon mine again. Simon's is willing to take on the responsibility of putting it, putting it down and putting it together. So he don't need to go off the contract.
Oh, good, great. Anything else for sewage? Okay.
Yeah, excuse me.
Sure.
We had an issue with alum down there, tanks, old chemicals. How do we make out with that?
Oh, they just failed a little, a grocery inspection.
Yes.
We did not get in, we got involved in stuff. We had the garage and the office. We didn't get written up on any of the stuff at the race to water plant. They put it all against Simon's. They had a separate hearing and a separate proceeds. That was one of the issues with the improper signage. They were, they are there now, but they went there the day he showed up. The person who did the inspection did the closeout. And these are the items he's sending forth to Vosia, who may well determine whether there's gonna be any fines or not.
So we're not involved in that?
No, we're not involved in it. The things we're involved here was downstairs, a circuit breaker was missing out on the panel. The cover of a broken-out piece on the panel. That was, that was the big one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other was safety procedures, which we need to have a Friday morning tailgate meetings on the Highway Department for Safety. What Simon's does, I think they got written up for safety also. They have hired a person to handle safety for all of their contracts. So that they get the regular meetings and people go to things.
Good, thank you.
So when we hit the fifty thousand dollar fine, then I'll come back and see and tell you, oop, I misled you.
Okay, returning to the regular shortboard, standing committees. I went to the Transportation Council meeting, and there's another one coming up for this week. And what we're doing is making a recommendation to send up to the AOT people with recommendations for projects in the area. And I did talk with Devon about the railroad bridge hearing. So I expect to be talking with him on that again this week at the next meeting. And Tom can maybe fill me in too, if I've missed something. But we went up to the district meeting for the mosquito district. And they seem to be all in line and ready to work this season. And they've got their budget proposal. I think they raised us up, what, four hundred, four hundred dollars or something? Yeah, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Still.
This year, the only other thing that created a mess of discussion was Salisbury has some questions of maybe dropping out of the district. They have a problem with one of the chemicals in the procedures. And so that'll be decided at town meetings, so... Everything's a go up there. The new chairman, Mike Blaisdell from Pittsburgh, has taken over that chairmanship at the moment. That's about it. Anybody else have any other committee reports?
How about?
We've been busy, but...
Oh, yeah? Forgot we were a committee. Yeah, so the town manager position, we've been meeting twice a week.
Yeah, another meeting tomorrow?
We'll pretty much narrow it down to, get everything else.
All right, they're having some paperwork.
We meet again Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think there's some stuff in the packet that we...
Yeah, she's working on it.
I'm a little long, can I?
Can I open this?
Okay.
So I got an email today on policing from Pittsburgh. And they've done their, they're supposed to come back to us with some numbers. They have to wait for a proposal that they're gonna make to us. They have to wait on that because they have to obtain, or try to obtain a cops grant to cover some of the substantial expenses of hiring a full-time officer. And the deadline for that is March 11th. So after that, they'll get back to us on when we can meet and have a number for us. They do believe that they can come in within reason of what we're paying for the sheriff's department. And we would have our own officer.
There was, I don't know what it was, there was a sheriff parked on the sidewalk in front of the Marble Church today. Running radar, blocking the sidewalk. And I slowed down, and I said, "Nope."
I did too, but I didn't do anything. I just...
I think he parked on the sidewalk, you know, with a marked cruiser. Of all the places, you know, she, anyway, whatever.
I didn't stop either.
Okay, going in to see if we had the ordinance in fact. We could've had him give themselves a ticket. Well, I'd let you on the sidewalk.
Well, well, um, there's a question. If we're redoing this parking ordinance, is it, you know, is there no ordinance in, in place now? I mean, could they, you know, if I stopped and said, "I want you to issue yourself a ticket," you know?
Well, yeah, there is no ordinance in place. We had a sixty-day life before it became an ordinance. We rescinded it tonight, so there's no, there's no ordinance in place about...
There's no parking ordinances?
The only parking is the litter parking.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's not a good thing. Is Thursday?
This Thursday? Maybe. I think, probably. What time?
Okay, we have a worker license renewal for the market on West Street, so...
Motion approved?
Seconded.
All over the favor?
Aye.
So why don't we catch that before everyone leaves for signatures?
And make sure you sign it on the right spot.
Yes.
Says approved, do not on the spot that says disapproved.
Yes. Yeah, that's well-marked there, so... I didn't bring it up, but there was a little note from Nancy.
That was nice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For the...
Very nice. You know, you don't...
The dedication.
You don't see very many handwritten notes anymore.
No.
Kind of nice to see one once in a while, especially with some of the older people having viewers of penmanship.
Thank you for the nomination.
Okay. Town meeting materials. What would we like to have Stan put together for us? Anything?
I, I think we're going to need, we should talk about the watershed. How, how much time are we appropriating to this? And I think we're gonna need definite materials on that.
Well, I think Ray's suggestion was nine minutes.
Yes. So that water that was on the table...
That's per speaker.
Per speaker, yeah.
That's a long time.
Nine, I thought it was three. No, it was three minutes per speaker, nine minutes total for each board.
Okay.
Well, he was, if you had two people, if I read it correctly, two people relinquish their time to the third person. They got three for themselves and six for the other two people. So that person could speak for nine minutes.
I see.
Okay.
That's fine.
But then you could have another person, you have his time to another person, and you could have somebody else speaking for another twenty hours.
I thought it was nine minutes per topic.
If I read correctly, it's nine minutes per speaker.
Speaker.
But I wrote, that's what it looks like.
If they have two other people who are willing to... The, I see the watershed tying up, you know, an hour or certainly longer. Well, could we get a volunteer here to study up on this a little bit and stand up with a bulletproof vest on and answer most of the questions? Because, you know, they, they're gonna want some answers.
I guess here's the thing, though. I don't see this being as many questions as being statements.
Well, that, that's fine. I mean, that's all we've got here is, you know.
Right.
I think we should sell it to, like, even on National Forests. I think we should do that. You know, I don't mind listening to that, but there would be some questions about, you know, what can we make on this money? You know, the National Forest is gonna pay us one dot five million.
Now, an info sheet which had what the, the one that you got there, that says that if you initiate a million and a half, if you don't touch it, you've got two-point-something million at the end of ten years. If you do touch it, and you take out four and a half percent, you take out seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, and you've still got a million seven left.
Well, this is, this is a good sheet to have.
It is, it is, but that's not gonna happen in real life.
Well, here's the other part. I think we also need to know there's, there are going to be questions as to saving it so we can use the water again.
Yeah.
Or you'll need to use the water again, or, you know, for logging, and we're gonna get those kinds of questions.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, and I think we, you know, we certainly can keep it for logging and...
The major concern is it seems like, like letters to the editor and stuff have primarily been the water or the use of the land for hiking. It seems like the timber doesn't even come up as much as those two things.
True, exactly.
So, and I guess too, the other question that comes up is, do we make enough off of logging to pay the taxes every year? Because I wanna pay, you know what I mean? That's gonna be another question that comes up.
Yeah, which, that's who you, that's why I think we should have one member, you know, study up a little bit on this and be able to answer most of those money questions. Can I just ask what the consensus of the board is?
I don't know. I'd, I'd like to keep it.
Keep it to the town?
Yeah.
I'd like to get rid of it, and to who, I really don't care.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I mean, if, if we can make a profit, we're gonna make much more, like, even if this is high, high-end, you're still making much more of a profit than you're out timber over ten years.
And we got no insurance or liability.
Right, and that's it. I mean, most people I've talked to in other towns, it's like, no, nobody wanna own that. You know, 'cause of the liability piece. Plus, I feel, and this is just my bit, because I still really don't know or whatever. But, you know, everyone's honing in on this fifteen hundred acres that we need to hold on to because we can't hike up there. We can't snowmobile. Well, the state owns thirty thousand acres right next door. It's not like we're taking fifteen hundred acres away from two thousand acres, you know? So this is a small chunk of what is left for people to enjoy outdoors, hiking, snowmobiling and things. And we've met with him, and he has changed his dynamics a little and given up some of the property to be used or sold to the state to get those...
The one that's that was trapped. I don't think he's a bad guy, you know?
And I think that's the hard part, is everyone's, and I don't know him personally, but I, I feel like everyone's attacking him like he's a huge developer. Nobody even knows him.
Yeah.
And just 'cause somebody wants to buy this property that probably ninety percent of the people in Proctor didn't know we owned, is up in arms. So I think that's, you know...
So your feeling is?
I'm leaning towards if somebody were willing to buy it, and we got a good price on it.
Ben?
And I'm torn because I do look at it as an asset, and I look at it as, you know, a source of income. And at the same time, it's hard to argue if this best-case scenario worked out against, you know, two-quarters of a million dollars and still having the principal of the, of the fund. So...
Well, the stock market took a big dive today.
Yes, it did.
Down points.
This number, as she said, is based on real history, real history.
Yeah, I, I understand that, yes. So your feeling is?
It, I mean, honestly, I, I can go however the town wants to go. I really don't have a strong opinion either way.
Myself, I guess... Okay, so one of my questions actually is, who is the land deeded to? Do we have the ability to sell it? Is it deeded to the town of Proctor, or is the deed in somebody else's name?
Yeah, but we're asking you, what's your personal opinion? You want to tell the...
My personal opinion?
Yeah, you don't wanna hear all of it.
And that's gonna affect what I, you know, that's gonna affect my answer. If it's, if it's deeded to us, then we have the right to sell it. If it's not, then, you know, we're wasting a lot of time. My feeling is, and I've thought about it a lot, I wouldn't mind selling it. However, I do not wanna sell it to a private owner. I would rather sell it to the nature conservancy or, or that. Do I know that we're not gonna make what we would with a private seller? Maybe, maybe not. We don't know that for sure yet.
We don't.
But I also am okay, either way the town goes. If the town is, wants to keep it by vote, then, then okay. And I also agree that most people didn't even know it existed, so...
What's the liability issue, Judy?
Well, it's just the liability of if, you know, people go use our property, you know, that we own if something happened on it. Or just the liability of having an asset out there that we...
Does that liability actually exist then? Because we own property here in town that everybody in town knows on. And that's not my understanding from our attorney, that that's the way the liability works. I think, I think if you're gonna speak about something, and you're going to have serious, strong feelings about it, you need to be rooted in truth and factual information going forward.
Well, we do pay insurance on the...
You do, I, we pay insurance on our forest land as well.
I, I think that's what Judy's referring to.
No, that's very different than saying it's a liability.
Well, anything you own is a liability.
Exactly.
Whether it's a lot, or whether it's a building, it's a liability.
Probably a liability for the, for the park than it is that property. We talk about the number of people that are on it and things that transpire on it.
Well, I don't know, I just, if, if we can make money out of it, you know, the arguments I've heard as, as far as keeping it are just for, you know, pretty much pleasure. And it's not like, some, some of those people that spoke to it, I bet they've never even been up there. Other people use it all the time. It's just if it's an asset and we have the ability to sell it and make a big profit now and invest that somehow to make more money for the town, then eyeing for that versus getting a small stipend, you know, every 10 years or five years from timber.
Well, when everybody thought it may be a profit, and if you go back and done the research and know what the actual cost was and figure what the time, expense for taxes were over time, so...
Oh, right, everything's a profit. But if you can make a 10% profit versus a 50% profit...
Well, and once again, that's doing the research and having the conversation based in data.
Right, oh, I know, I'm sure no matter what we come up with, people will talk us and they'll know more than we do, so it's, it's gonna be what it is when we have town meetings. I mean, we're going off basically the information that people have shared with us that we've asked to come in and talk to us about this property, as well as the one who wants to purchase it, so...
And there's, there's been plenty of opportunity for the citizens to come in, and we have gotten more out-of-towners coming to meetings and commenting on this than residents, which, which surprised me. So I, I don't think there's a big, I don't think there's a huge concern out there, to tell you the truth.
I, I would, I would strongly disagree with that, as listening to lots of different people, so...
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen them here, and nobody's called me. Not one person has called me on this. I have asked quite a few people, but not one person has asked me.
Asked you, how you...
Well, you know, what are you gonna do, sell it or keep it? And nobody's asked me that.
Stan, do you know what the league has on that for insurance? What they cover that piece of property for?
Just liability.
Do you know the value they've placed on it, as far as that?
It's, you know, part of the proof. I don't have a number.
Right.
As to how much liability, whether it's, you know, what the league's total insurance package is, we're probably carrying more than a million dollars of liability.
Right.
On, on anything. And the only liability you have is if you know there's a hazard there and don't take care of it.
Right, right.
If you, if we have a heavy wind and there's a bunch of trees that are hung up, split off, and one comes down on somebody, then you're negligent.
Well, if there's a major forest fire in the house, then you have no timber.
But you know, it's, it's, you know, somebody hiking across it and breaks their leg, you're not, you don't pay...
That's not...
That's not a liability. It's just if you, it's negligent, because you've got to protect the homeowner, protect the property owner.
And I bet there's probably 20% of the people in town don't know anything about this or weren't aware of this up till this coming about, especially somebody that's only been here for 10 or 15 years. They have no concept of that, or how much it is, where it is, or anything. There's some people in town that have lived here for years that have never set foot even on one inch of that property up there.
Stan took me up there, almost killed me one day. I, I didn't know how many acres it was, I didn't realize it was that large.
Yeah, we didn't even get halfway to the top at all.
It was fair enough, Stan. All like this.
As far as the materials, what I would propose to do is a handout, which would have the investing one have the estimated yield for the next five years, which is 400,000. The other thing that's in there that I would suggest putting in is that, you know, if the vote is yes, and you come to a deal with somebody, it's got, it can go back to the property owners by a petition. So if you cut a deal with Mr. Gilak and have the papers already, there's the statute that says you have to notify everybody and they have a right to petition for a vote on it. So the answer is, if they wish to, the pop, the voters can take the issue to their own hands. The same thing on the, the ad for the sale of the tax sale problem. You've gotta go through the same process. So I think that should be on there so that people realize that they can shoot it down and go from there.
That's fine.
Other than dollars, that's the only thing that I can provide you. The rest of it is you've gotta do on your own.
Well, the more questions we can answer on a piece of paper form, the less...
Can you make, put what the tax, I know it's not a lot, but what we pay on taxes?
Yeah, it's 40,000.
Yeah, 4,000.
Okay, and also, the, the part about the water, why we stopped using it, and the, the part that we would not be able to use it again because of whatever the state has said. To have that available would be...
You could just do like a couple paragraphs of, yeah, the history.
Just a few paragraphs, I mean, it was, you know, okay, history, just a total history.
So, yeah, so...
History of why we had to stop using it.
What improvements would actually made, how much they would cost.
Yeah.
Versus what we did pay for the wells.
Yeah, the estimate was 12 million if we redid that water treatment plant versus 6 million if we put in a well. That was, that was an easy choi, well, it was an easy choice, but you didn't have very many voters turn out for it.
And maybe a map, because I know some people want to see where it is, they want to... So maybe some kind of map.
You said something about whether we own the property.
Is it deeded to us to use, or is it deeded to us as a town?
Deeded to the town. As I know, it was originally purchased by the village.
Yes.
And then the town...
We had a village and a town way back then.
Okay.
So there's no question of who owns it.
I don't think there is, but I will get an opinion just so that we've got it clarified. I mean, Alan's had both of these, had all these deeds.
Yeah.
Okay.
When we were looking at it.
I just wanna make sure that you clarify that, too, because I think that will also come up.
Well, the question that has never been answered, that was supposed to go to Alan, was, it is an asset of water. When you sell it, does the asset become the town's, the general fund? Or when you sell it, does the asset stay within water?
Dr. Swetford?
That, that...
It would be a matter of moving the asset from the water department to the town.
Only if it sells.
Only if, yeah, only if it sells. Well, you can move, no, if, if you keep it and harvest it, you could take the harvest money and apply it other places, but you've gotta take the asset out of the water department and put it, or split the asset up.
Move it from one different, one department to another.
We don't get our water there anymore.
Well, let's see, the way that the revenue goes, goes into the water department fund account to be used for water projects, which, if you used it to reduce the debt service, which is 200,000 a year, if you took 60,000 or 40,000 and came out of the logging revenue, it would reduce the water rate by some number. But then again, you have the situation where not everybody in town pays for water.
Yeah.
True. So it should everybody in town benefit from that asset.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very true. Okay, we've got our municipal plan.
Now, let's, let's go back to the town meeting.
Yeah.
The voting. And is that one, I have a word, which is the library, and I assume if there's any questions, the library will respond to those.
Uh, just a quick question for Lisa. Lisa, were you, you know, were you supposed to go on second or first rotating?
We don't have anything.
So you won't be there that night? Or you'll be there, but you won't have a presentation?
We can say something at the end, but we don't have to provide anything. They aren't, and we can just...
Yeah.
Yeah, seven, right?
So any questions on the library, the library board would respond to, because it's on there. As far as the Articles Three and Four, which are the budget items, is there something you would like for budget items? I have prepared a overhead policy, but we haven't used it, but we handed it out last year. I think we want it just in case. Just have it ready and have the handouts also.
Just a handout, or?
It's the same thing.
Yeah, right.
And then the other one is, shall we date for real property? There's nothing easy you can do for that.
No.
That, that one's kinda easy.
Yeah.
The other one is, shall the town vote to have the town reports available to the town office and move distributing to every resident? I don't see a handout for that, other than the cost factor, which is a $400 mailing cost.
Well, I think we probably will get away with printing a lot fewer town reports, too.
Well, yeah, well, it's, you know, yeah, we wouldn't pay to have 850 printed.
Right. That's kinda substantial.
Would we also make it digitally available?
Excuse me?
Like, would we put it on the town?
Yeah, it's on, it's online now.
Okay. If they were to turn it online, so...
So it's, it's available. But there's other than dollars and cents, the rest is cetera.
Yeah.
Well, it, it might, the way the post office is running, if we did that, it, you know, might be a little bit more than the, the last time we mailed it out. But that's, as I say, that's the only thing, and whoever, they feel that number is worth it, who knows? I think that, I think we've covered most everything there.
Yeah, anything else?
The other one is the big one, and I don't know whether you can limit the time.
It is, I believe, you have a time limit, isn't there?
Well, it was at nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock.
Yeah. And, you know, if it has run, but that's when we've had, you know, school or two and what have you, so... And I can remember a few times where they remanded that for, you know, 15 minutes or a half an hour, but I don't believe that everyone, ours will ever run past nine o'clock.
I don't know.
Here's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the, and I'm sure that Ray and Dick will talk it over as to, out-of-town people who wish to speak have to be, I believe, have to be approved by the voters before they're allowed to speak.
Because we had that with the fluoride issue.
Yeah.
Anything else on town meetings? Municipal plan?
You've already done that.
Done that, so, okay. Olympus Road sliding in Skeeto.
I have had a request that the town make a sliding hill again. And so I told the person I would put it on the agenda to see what the sympathies of the board may or may not be at this meeting or any future meeting. We don't have to worry about it until next, next year. The one suggestion that I had was, maybe the board would do it for February vacation.
Why did we, why did they start plowing it? Because that road always used to be closed, and we used to slide down it. So was there, was there a reason that?
My, my understanding, the reason was fire access, two directions to Olympus.
And that would be the only thing to run it by the fire Josh and, and see whether he would render an answer before Monday or...
Before Monday?
So they actually want the road closed, or they're talking just about the hill where Skeeto used to be?
There, well, I don't know, I've never been here, who knew it was closed?
So when I was a kid, that part of Olympus, they just didn't plow.
Right.
And you just sort of...
But the Skeeto wasn't on the hill.
The Skeeto wasn't there when I, on the side of the road.
Skeeto, you mentioned Skeeto, so I didn't know that.
Yeah, up behind, yeah, no, that's, that's two different things.
Yeah. So if they just want the hill, then fine.
Well, I, we were talking about the Skeeto and the hill. This was down at the, at the creek when I was down there one day, and there were some people there.
That's gonna get, cost something, though, to get the Skeeto running.
Yeah, I think that's a totally separate issue.
Right, but it's included here.
Yeah, I just put it down, yeah, for discussion purposes.
They're looking into, you know, electric motor, that used to be the thing that they used years ago when they ran it, was an electric motor, so, so they're looking into that, but... Yeah, I was just saying that was why it was closed, was the liability.
So I don't have, I don't have a problem with the sliding hill. You know, that was there years ago, it worked well. Skeeto, I pay note of that, and that's, I'd be curious what the insurance company had to say about that.
And I'm kinda curious, I guess, too, why we need to do the sliding hill when they slide on this hill in the park?
It's a much longer run.
Yeah, it's a longer run.
Kind of the skating rink thing, too. Some of the kids like to skate all day, some of them don't.
And that's a nice, long hill to...
It is.
I really happy to use the one by the park, we would slide down, is it Chapel?
Yeah.
Chapel, straight over, slide down.
Kids love it.
If you stop and drive down, and you start up at the upper house, the stone house.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a, a great ride on a bobsleigh.
And I'm pretty sure it was dirt back then, too.
Yes.
Warren just didn't want to plow it, so it turned into- So it turned into, yeah, it wasn't anything official.
No. And it's been plowed as, as long as I've been here, which is eight years.
Yeah, yeah, I think when Warren left, they started plowing it.
I just put it on the agenda for something to talk about, somebody else will talk about it before next winter probably.
So the recreation committee isn't requesting that?
No, this was an individual.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, if they want to slide down the hill, they can slide down the hill, can't they? I mean, the hill hill, the real hill, not the road.
The old Skeeto, yeah.
It was all grown up, and it was all grown up, and you couldn't slide it on the side.
Without hitting trees?
Well, and you've got the culvert right there on that south side, and you'd have to go down past that, and that would shorten it up by at least a quarter of a run, so. And let's see what happens. Okay, a letter to the governor regarding the carver. My buddy?
My last name only has one S. My last name is, doesn't have two S's, it has one S.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we're not, we're not the airplane courtesans, we're-
Right.
The question is, is a letter, something you want to sign, and they'll get, the cop is going to have to sign it tonight.
Yeah.
I'd be glad to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the motion to sign it and send it.
Yeah, nice job of the letter, thank you.
Yes, nice.
Second.
I, I had one other word that I had used that to pick out, and that was perturbed.
Perturbed, okay, I was-
It was perturbed at the inaction.
Yeah, we don't need to be perturbed.
Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you're, you're a Democrat, then?
What's that?
You'll appreciate this, I'm sure.
Yeah. So we've taken care of the Second Amendment. As zoning administrator.
I make a motion, will you please stand until we get squared away and get one? Second. Oops, sorry.
I have talked to Jeff Byakusi.
Byakusi.
And I thought he was- He was a professional zoning administrator.
He was, he's in some, a number of other towns.
And he, he will get back to me, he was going to look at our ordinance and look at our rules and the plan and get back to me, but he wanted to know how much work it was, and I said, uh, maybe one per minute a month in the summertime, and maybe three on the board, as to how much time he can spend at it. He says he's booked, but I think he will fit it in. The estimated price he gave me was $25 an hour, which, and, and he would keep all the fees. See, the town, see, right now, Bob gets the fees, less expenses, the advertising expenses, you know?
That's what he'll pay for his, yeah, rate almost.
Yeah, he'll, he'll want to pay for himself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's supposed to be getting back to me, I put it on the agenda, because I thought he was going to call me Friday, and I would have a proposal for you, but he's still thinking about it.
Yeah, just, just for information, the planning commission's leaning towards, um-
Yeah, it would, it would work all better to have somebody from out of town and, you know.
My friends, Bill and the friends, who's, who's close, but.
So he would be offering the same as Lisa Wright, to just have their contract-
Yes.
-to provide services. The question was how much of the services, as far as the administrative review of stuff or attendance at meetings, and I say he'll talk to Dick about that.
Okay, and we have a motion here, pointing Stan a zoning interim, zoning- Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you double the salary for that? $25 an hour.
Yeah.
There you go.
For tablets?
There's nothing new on the tablets, they're, uh, they'll get back to you, we need a new email address.
Yeah.
All this stuff, the thing to it, to change to a dot gov will cost us $400 a year, as opposed to the 75 that we pay as a dot com. Other than that, uh, it's, just do it. And I guess the question was, I said I would bring it back to the board, and they felt that was a reasonable expense, because we would move the whole website over to there also at some point.
I don't think it really matters.
For the same-
If it's a dot com versus-
Yeah, we, we, the cost is the domain name.
The domain.
Okay, so if our website's there or not, it's still-
It's still, still would be the same.
But I think it's fine being a dot com, we don't need it to be a dot gov, I don't think.
I, I think Stan's point was, uh, just make an email address that if something happens, they can, you're a public figure, you, they can-
Right, but you can do it as a dot com, too. Everything's the same, it's just, the ending is just different. I mean, we're not dot gov even in the city, really?
I, I just, you know, I feel a little nervous about people going through my personal emails, not that I do a lot of them.
But you're still going to have your email-
You're going to have that.
Separate, you have, I, that's what I'm saying. It just won't have gov at the end, it would have-
Like com.
Com at the end.
So it's silly about that up, so what was her reasoning? About asking to change it? Didn't Sylvia bring that up, changing to a dot gov?
The only thing that she was talking about is getting the message out to everybody, but it would carry over, your old address would carry over.
Yeah.
I thought she, uh, two weeks ago, something said that, um, she, she had a reason. I thought that's what, how it got to dot gov and changing that.
Even Life or, even the Life or, St. Liberty is not a dot gov now, so, I mean-
I'm just asking, because I'm pretty sure that she had a reason, but I don't-
I think her, the only thing I remember with Sylvia was that they take the underscore out of-
Yeah.
That's it, I'm like, there's something-
Well, you might do, well, I might do email address if you don't do it.
No, there was an issue, it just went back.
Okay. The underscore.
Or, or that is when it ends up in hyperlinks.
I know, because Don Delany does have the underscore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we've talked about police service.
So going back, I want to finish that. So when are the, um, addresses going to be set up?
Well, not till we get the tablet.
At the town meeting?
Well.
But we don't need the tablets to do that.
The addresses we can do, if we're staying on the dot com.
The long dot com, we've been doing this, just, uh, $7.50 a month per address.
So it's the- Dot com or both?
The dot com.
Okay, but not dot gov?
But we don't have to buy the domain name. If, if the cost of either way is going to be the same, whether we add seven, six people onto our existing dot com and give them addresses, or whether we set up a new one through the cloud and have a dozen on it. That's what, that's what Pat was working on. All Paul was doing, he was looking at the, uh, domain name type issue.
So can you just have Pat put us together a proposal with?
Yeah, I've tried.
Yeah, I'll call him and see.
No, he will. What he was looking for was, which way are we going?
Okay.
And what he's looking at is code book in the cloud, uh, for no cost.
Right.
So let me follow up on that one.
Thanks, Steve.
Just do it.
Go ahead.
So a risk assessment.
Where are-
Fraud risk assessment.
Let's skip this.
Books, we are scheduled for a meeting, uh, with, with Brigham, probably a week after a town meeting, so be somewhere in time around there.
Yeah.
Can you just email us when that's going to be?
Yeah. And one representative from the board, and I think Kerry volunteered to be a representative as long as he had a lead time to make the schedule work.
Okay, tax sale?
But we skipped police services and coverage.
Huh?
Is that, oh, I see.
Yeah.
And then you've got the sheriff's, wait a minute, we skipped this.
Okay, what you've got is a, and I put a new one into your packet on your desk, is just the advertisement that would go in the paper and the form to fill out, this was prepared by the attorney. And I would, if anybody has a comment on it, we can look at it, but otherwise, I will put it in the paper this week.
Yes, let's get it going.
She asked that I hold on what the minimum is going to be for her to do one more reiteration, to be sure she's happy with the number in there for the minimum. If we don't receive a minimum, and I talked to Jerry today, we'll turn around the next day and we'll put it in the paper again with no minimum.
No minimum. Yeah. Okay.
And again, that has the approval of a possible petition not to sell it, but I don't know why anybody would petition not to sell it, but-
Yes.
That's why, that's why he's got the statute in there in the days.
Especially if we get what we have into it, or what's holding on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Town office.
You have a letter in your packet, uh, saying that you have agreed with the grant conditions for the accessibility grant. And if you would, a motion to accept the grant conditions, then I'll sign the letter and send it off. That's one more little piece that has to be checked off on your checklist.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Second.
So that doesn't mean that we have to use it, though, correct?
No.
No.
Correct, I just want to make sure that we're-
Yeah, for the double, yeah. What they, this is, there's about seven things that have to be done, we've got five of them done, this is the sixth one. Uh, the other one is our financial policy, which Sylvia and I are working on to get done. And then they will send us the grant con, contract, the grant agreement.
Yeah.
Then we can sit down and look at that.
Okay.
But if you don't take the grant after, it's a serious work.
Yeah.
Well, that, that is a possibility.
Construction easement?
I think there's a motion.
Motion.
Make the motion.
Yep, so do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The other part of that packet stapled on the back is a contract for administrative services for Bob Esposito, who works for the city of Rutland, uh, doing grant stuff. And what she has put in there is, is just the administrative assistance. I wouldn't do the program management portions of it, because she had a fee of $1,500 to get us through. And I would recommend that we use her, because she does this all the time for Rutland Development. And she was very, we worked relatively good together to get two more items off the checklist that I couldn't figure out how to get. After she showed me all the steps, and then she said, over there, there's a button that says submit. And that's what we're hiring for, is to understand the situation, and then where's the submit button? So if you would approve that agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with that. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And this is, this is one of the things that the state was concerned about, that we could, unknown, keep up with their program. And so they're looking for this contract.
You had a conversation with Mr. Casella?
Yes, or the construction? He has no problem, uh, with giving a construction easement. Alan Judge is working up the language, I've got to measure it one distance, which is from the red dots to the curb line, uh, because originally Ed Clark had it set at 18 feet off their building. He wants to make it out to wherever the curb line is. So we're going to measure it up and give that to Alan, and he'll write it up. Uh, talking about the boundary line adjustment, he would be willing to talk about that when they know what they might be doing with the building, who their possible tenants are. They know they're going to be building another parking lot on the south side of the building in order to manage some of the cars that are coming there. So he, he just didn't want to tie his hands by picking out a number for right now, but what we need now is the construction easement.
That's temporary.
That's a temporary construction easement.
What's, uh, what's the cost on that?
What for the easement?
He going to charge us?
No. No. And this is in here, this though, that you know that March 5th is the bid opening date.
Yeah.
And they had the pre-construction meeting, and there was a good turnout, so.
Yes. Vermont Art Council. That was in your-
In your packet. This is a program that will give you $500 to help you do something artsy about your project. And I would suggest we submit the project for a profit and see whether we get one, and then what type of art we would be looking for, whether we're looking for a statue, or whether we'd be looking for a banner, or whether we'd be looking for paintings around the building, I'm not sure. That's up to the artist to come in with proposals. But I would suggest that we go for it, it's not due until the 13th of March, I believe, so it'll be on, the application will be on your agenda.
This cost is nothing, we don't have to match it.
No, this is just $5,000 to support the arts program. If you have ever been in the courthouse and looked at the paintings on the wall, uh, those were commissioned when they built the courthouse to put art on every floor. And a lot of others, and every state building, I think, has got some degree of art in it. So, and it's just, it's just one more thing here to, to kind of cap off the program, I think.
And we get back to 61 Main Streets. Any? We're not voting again, and, uh-
Yeah, we had Paul and Ed and-
And Jay.
Joe White. And I think the resolution of the discussion that we had with Sylvia was in honor, is that we wait until we open bids on the 5th to see if we're in budget. I mean, the sentiment has been to stay in this building, and honoring that sentiment is to stay here, but if some, if the bids come in extremely high, then you may want to look at a different endeavor. So March 5th will be, with March, uh, meeting, March 9th meeting, you could be thinking about conversations at that time.
So whose sentiment? Who, who thinks that we should stay here? When you say that, who are you referring to?
I'm referring to the two study committees that made recommendations to the select board, specifically the second one. Now, they reduced the scope of the project because of the cost, but they still, was the sentiment to stay in the building.
Yeah.
To use it as a function, so.
See how the bids come in?
Yeah, that was. So, see what the bids come in and go from there.
So that also still leaves us with where the town office is going to be for this construction, correct?
Well, right now, we are looking at temporary, I don't know, Tommy went over and wandered through the museum building to see if there's even a hint that we might be able to use it.
There's a small hint we might be able to use it. They're not crazy about the idea, but they're not saying no.
But what I've got is the name of two companies who supply temporary office space, similar to what Castleman had.
Where would you set those up?
I talked to a museum, uh, Ryan Smith, anyway, about putting them in the parking lot.
Yeah, because they're going to be closed this summer, yeah?
Yeah. And he had no, he had no, no problem with that.
Anything on our junk vehicles, Sarah?
Okay, I sent an email to Officer Webster, asking him to report back on what has happened with the list that he gave us. Uh, we've got three responded, I know have cleaned up their cars. Uh, we've got two that are asking, one is the camper, who tends to register it in April. who tends to register it in April with the camping season. And the other are two cars, one of them is being demolished or stripped. And both of those are supposed to be out by April. The other ones I heard from have already removed their vehicles. But I asked him to give us a check off of the status, and if they haven't removed them, to ticket them.
Because there's more to that list than just the few that you're talking about, too. That was a pretty extensive list.
Yeah, there was quite a few on there. So there are some who have not done anything, yes. They haven't called me, they haven't responded, or they haven't moved their car. And we got the two meetings that went out because of the mix up in the address.
So Stan, can you email them and say that for our next meeting, we'd love to see the progress of the patients? Who's been taken in, who hasn't? We use the thank you.
Town manager search, anything?
We have the job description packet.
Any advertisement?
Yeah, any advertisement.
We're meeting, we're doing interviews, questions.
Wednesday.
Finalizing that.
Ready? You guys move right along. Judy and I discovered we think strangely alike when it comes to interview questions.
Anything on the budget reports? They're in the packet.
Nothing working.
Pretty good. Service department? We'll short this time, but...
Stan, you were going to email the sheriff and see if he would enforce our new parking ordinances?
Wish we don't have one. If he were enforcing, I think... I did not send him an email asking whether he would enforce them. I think we talked about it being in the ordinance as opposed to being the state. That they would be enforcing ordinances, enforcing the ordinance more than they would a state law. Which a lot of it is the same wording.
One thing I did notice, too, in the parking ordinance, it was about speed, speeds on town highways up there. It appears we didn't, I thought we were going to include Route 3 out to our border so that when tickets were issued out there, even we got the revenue. That was...
That wasn't in there.
That was some time ago.
That's it, yeah. It's not in the ordinance. Whether it can be in the ordinance for a state highway, I don't know. They set the speed limit. What you're looking for is the revenue.
Yes, the sheriff suggested that to us. About a year ago.
I didn't remember that, yeah.
Or more, yeah. Yep, so we should get the revenue. Because the way they code them out...
It's not what they're writing it against.
Dictates who the fine goes to.
Let me follow up on that one. Apologize for not getting an answer on it. I think you got it back open again.
Good time.
And just a note that we, you know, that letter from, again, of the town forest. Anything else? Other than getting...
And losing the letter to the governor.
Yes. And we've got the liquor license to sign.
And what about these two big books here?
One of the audit reports. One of the audit reports in Solomon's, the annual report.
Yeah, did we pass the audit?
Yeah.
Wasn't that there last year, too? We're going to get two of them.
We're going to do it. You get them off, then next year. This is all the ways that we can have the first time they have put out a report.
This recycled paper, Kerry.
What's the important thing here?
Does he want your name changed?
I'll just cross out the... Wage structure for next year, right?
What was that?
The important thing is the wage structure for next year.
That is the important thing.
What about toders for July 1st for the food scraps? Are we receiving small toders?
That's a Casella issue. That's not a Rutland solid waste district.
Right, I'm asking though, because we contract with Casella, does that change our cost with Casella? If we're receiving a third?
It will change our cost, maybe not this year. And I don't know if Casella's really finished deciding how they're going to deal with it. They're still...
Mark told me he was meeting with the haulers. Has he had that meeting, or do you know?
Other haulers?
He was going to invite all the haulers in the county to get together and talk about the law and what are the loopholes in the law. Not loopholes, but the wages. Not everybody has to do it.
Well, Casella said when it came to the schools...
Well, the school has to do it.
They, there weren't any big loopholes that they talked about.
However, there's a lot of parts about that, though that they still don't know how... It's another state thing where they passed something, but haven't thought of how it's going to happen.
Like a court issue?
So, you know, where is it going to? Even at the transfer station, you can bring it there now, but the transfer station in Rutland brings it somewhere else. There's not a disintegrator, there's not...
I understand the haulers put the bill issue.
Yes, so, and a lot of people, the big question is, well, how is it going to be mandated? And the only thing I can think of of how it's going to be mandated is by checking trucks and where they come from by the town, and then maybe possibly, and this is just, this is what I've said, that there'd be a fine to the town. But that hasn't been, that's the only way I can think of that it would be possible to mandate. We'll see what the state comes up with.
I think the big thing as far as Proctor's concerned is the curbside. And our contract does not include...
Right.
Food waste. So that would be, if we wanted to do it, let's forget about what the law says. If you wanted to provide the service, what would the cost be? And I don't have a clue. But I'm sure Casella can give us a number with putting a third bucket out there.
Well, and just like I said, I don't know if they've even gotten a, like, it's a totally different setup and truck that they would need to be able to do that.
But I'm sure if there's money that they would offer.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's a lot of money. There's no money in plastic right now, and they still have to offer it.
Exactly. And again, a year from now, you will be negotiating a new contract with somebody if you stay with curbside.
So let's, so we can at least answer the question, can we ask Casella what?
I've asked them, but they haven't responded because they don't know.
They don't know. Neither does the state. No one knows.
I mean, I could ask them what it would cost to do curbside pickup for the town of Proctor. They probably could come up with a number.
Just to have the number, just so we can have...
That would be more, you know, gas and trucks and whatever else and the disposal cost. But the big thing for a single-family resident, I think their law will apply. You can't put food waste in your trash. How you get rid of it is up to you.
And who are they going to make the police on this?
Well, that's what I'm thinking that...
Nobody knows.
It'll be like a hauler thing in the check of the truck, and then what town did you come from? And it'll come back to the town. That's the possibility. It's not anything written in stone. It's not anything that's been confirmed or any of that.
Kerry, it might be, if I'm ready to do it, and Mark's ready to do it, to come over and talk to us. I'm sure you're not ready yet, but before 1st of July, is to come in and talk to us about where he thinks we're headed.
Oh, somebody from the solid waste district?
Yeah, I've got Mark Schake.
You want Mark Schake to come?
Yes. But if it's the next one or the one after, that would be your call. Or his call as to how much you know. But I think that would open up the discussion as to what we're going to do in Proctor, which is different than what other towns are doing. I mean, we're in a different boat.
Well, right, because other towns also have a transfer station, and it goes to the transfer station, and the transfer station takes it to Rutland County, solid waste district. And a lot of people do compost. So what they're also finding is that the transfer stations that are collecting, it's not a lot. Because a lot of people already do compost or use their garbage disposal or...
Yeah, that's true. With the sewer system, the garbage disposal handles the problem.
So, and also, there's, there's a reach out to people. His name is just totally gone, but he will visit the school if need be, so he can...
Well, Casella's already come around and done proposals, but we've been doing that for some time. Our schools here in Proctor.
This is kid workshop, kid oriented, and teaching them about composting. That, that's totally...
Yeah, we do that. We've done it at their local school for a number of years.
And the concept of that is that they'll take it home to their family and...
I think the problem is this has been on the agenda and it just keeps getting pushed and pushed. Because we have all kinds of workshops because it was going to happen like two years ago or something. So we had college thing joke them because they had a huge, they composted everything there. They were great, and then it was like, oh, we're not going to do it. So it kind of, then everyone that was kind of on board with doing it just lost momentum about the composting and everything. And I think now it's kind of like, people are like, is it really going to happen? You know, it's like, we've heard about this now for like five years.
I think it is really going to happen.
Oh, I assume so. That's part of it, that's just like kind of like the constant conversation, so.
I think it's really going to happen. It's just a matter of when and to what extent is it going to happen.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
I got a last time.
All those in favor? Everybody want to stay?